Alderman Mayberry.
Here.
Alderman Spaghetti.
Here.
Alderman Tallinair.
Here.
Alderman Parker.
Here.
Alderman Ship.
Here.
Alderman Genon.
Present.
Alderman Clark.
Here.
Mayor Tomes.
Here. Would you like to do the pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Then if we could have just a moment of silence, please. Thank you very much. Item number five.
Minutes of the meeting of July tenth, twenty seventeen.
Move to approve the minutes as printed.
Second. Then moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Item number six.
Minutes of the executive session of July tenth, twenty seventeen.
Move to approve the executive minutes.
Second.
Then moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Passes. Item number seven. Update. So we have tell on your neighbor. Each year residents of Rock Island are encouraged to tell on your neighbor by nominating the yard in their neighborhood that they find to be the most appealing or the most improved. The City of Rock Island's Beautification Committee Commission will review all entries and awards will be presented at the September eleventh sixth city council meeting. Nominations can be made through August tenth by contacting the Community and Economic Development Department at three oh nine seven three two two nine zero zero or email at planning@rigov.org. Starlight Review Concert Series continues. Tuesday, July twenty fifth, the Review Concert Series will continue with the Backwater Bayou Band starting at seven PM at the beautiful Lincoln Park. Hy-Vee Grill will provide food and drink to purchase starting at five PM and the Friends of Hallberg will be selling treats as well. For an event status, please call three oh nine seven three two seven two four six in case of weather. Labor Day Parade Registration. Calling all families, schools, churches, organizations, clubs, businesses. The thirty-third Annual Rock Island Labor Day Parade is scheduled for Monday, September fourth, two thousand seventeen. Registration forms, due dates, themes, and more information can be found at www.rigov.org. The first Labor Day Parade was held in nineteen eighty-five as part of Rock Island's hundred-and-fiftieth birthday. Over the past thirty years, the parade has grown to average a hundred-and-fifty entries and has become a popular event that draws thousands of spectators. So get your organizations entered so that citizens can see your name in a unique way. Art in the Garden. The Quad City Botanical Center will host its first Art in the Garden Party. This is a day full of art, music, food trucks, and the gardens that you don't want to miss. The event will be held at the Botanical Center on July twenty-ninth, two thousand seventeen, from nine AM to four PM with costs for adults at eight dollars, ages five to fifteen are four dollars, and kids under five are free. Come get inspired by these artists of food, music, and art. For more information, please call three oh nine seven nine four zero nine nine one. One last highlight here. Highland Springs Renovations. The First T Quad Cities and the Rock Island Park and Recreation Department are partnering to renovate the Highland Springs Driving Range Practice Facility and expand the junior golf programming. The Driving Range and Practice Facilities will close August first to undergo the major renovations. Overall goal is to expand its First T programming for Rock Island youth, which has become a popular program as over a hundred-and-seventy-five children this summer have participated in this program. So we have a lot of things going on. Number eight.
Proclamation declaring July twenty-seventh through July thirtieth, twenty seventeen, as the commemoration of the Wall that Heals in the Quad Cities.
Excuse me. Is there any reading on to the next item? Is there anybody here to accept this? If you want to come to the podium there, then we'll read this and get this to you. Whereas WQPT Quad Cities PBS officially welcomes the Wall that Heals to the campus of Western Illinois University QC, to the Quad Cities in the commemorative and reflection of the Veterans War as well as the production of Ken Burns Vietnam War. And whereas, since Veterans Day nineteen ninety-six, the Wall that Heals has visited more than four hundred cities and towns throughout the nation, spreading the Vietnam War memorials, healing legacy to millions as well as providing an educational resource. And whereas, more than fifty-eight thousand members of the United States Armed Forces were killed in combat during the Vietnam War and over three hundred thousand were wounded. And whereas, we recognize, and honor, thank, and remember the courage of those who went overseas to Vietnam, those who were killed in action, those were emotionally, mentally, or physically scarred, and those who were able to return home safely. And whereas, that all viewpoints and options regarding this divisive war be respected and considered, especially with the reason of Ken Burns, the Vietnam War, and the perspectives that this program will entail. Now therefore, I, Mike Tomes, Mayor of the City of Rock Island, do hereby proclaim that July twenty-seventh through the thirtieth of two thousand seventeen be recognized as the commemorative of the Wall and Heal in the Quad Cities throughout the Quad Cities metro area as a period of both local and national observance with special utmost gratitude being shown to our Vietnam veterans for their services.
Thank you.
We got item number nine.
Proclamation declaring August first, twenty seventeen, as National Night Out.
Is there anybody here for that that would stand up there? That's fine. Let me turn that and we'll come up there in a second. Whereas the National Association of Town Watch, F A T W, and local, the Community Caring Conference are sponsoring a unique nationwide crime, drug, and violence prevention program on August first, two thousand seventeen, entitled National Night Out. And whereas, the thirty-fourth Annual Night Out, National Night Out, provides a unique opportunity for the City of Rock Island to join forces with thousands of other communities across the country in promoting cooperative police-community crime prevention efforts. And whereas, the City of Rock Island Police Department plays a vital role in assisting joint crime, drug, and violence prevention efforts in Rock Island and is supporting National Night Out, two thousand seventeen locally and whereas, it is essential that all citizens of Rock Island be aware of the importance of crime prevention programs and the impact that their participation can have on reducing crime, drugs, and violence in Rock Island. And whereas, police-community partnerships, neighborhood safety awareness, and cooperation are important themes of the National Night Out program. Now therefore, I, Mike Tomes, Mayor of the City of Rock Island, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, August first, two thousand seventeen, as National Night Out in Rock Island, Illinois, and call upon all citizens to join the Community Caring Conference and the Rock Island Police Department and the Rock Island Park and Recreation Department and the National Association of Town Watch in supporting this thirty-fourth Annual National Night Out.
If I may.
Yes.
First, I would like to thank you all so very much for this proclamation, Mayor and City Council and the City Manager. I appreciate it so much. I'm here to really invite you all to the National Night Out. This is the Community Caring Conference sponsoring this local celebration of the nationwide Night Out event, which recognizes the effectiveness of neighborhood and law enforcement cooperation in reducing and preventing crime. It is one of hundreds of similar activities under the coordination of the National Association of Town Watch. There will be refreshments. Activities include the K-9 Unit demonstration by the Rock Island Police Department, a tug award, no betting on who's going to win, the Rock Island County Sheriff or the Rock Island Police Department. We'll see when we get there. And as you know, this will be at Longview on August the first from five-thirty until eight. The Metropolitan Youth Program Drill Team will perform. There will be games and activities for the kids, which would be operated by employees of Moline Target Stores and the Rock Island Housing Authority. This family event is aimed at encouraging residents to be visible and active in their neighborhoods and to communicate effectively with the law enforcement to fight the crime. The Community Caring Conference has organized over forty block clubs within forty years. I'm sorry, a hundred-and-fifty block clubs within forty years. CCC is inviting active neighbors whose block clubs may need to be reactivated and anyone interested in becoming active in their neighborhood. And we're also inviting the active neighborhood block clubs that are still in progress since then. After the National Night Out celebration, residents are encouraged to return home and connect with the neighbors and turn your porch lights on to carry the message across the city. I would like to say CCC just reorganized and reactivated like six months ago. And I don't know how this happened, but our first meeting was for neighborhood was with Darren Gray, who came and spoke to us, and I thank him for being the first one to help get this back on track. And what he says is true. We need to be more active in our community. Neighbors need to know each other. Sometimes neighbors don't speak when things happen. That's why the fight for neighbors to get together to prevent crimes or to help the police, the police cannot do it by themselves. They take the extra eyes and ears of the community. And I'm not going to go any further because I can go on and on about this. But I'm also going to say, we are losing one of our board members who has been a board member for seven years, Lieutenant Rusty Harker, and he will also be honored that night, at National Night Out. So you all, please come on down and let's spread the word. Neighbors need to know each other. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
My name is Larry Hunter. I live at twelve thirteen fifteenth Street, Rock Island. This is a good topic to be discussing. Neighborhood crime. Can I ask Ms. Can I ask Amitra a question?
Is this, yeah, should try to keep it to five minutes or so, but the issue is, is this in regards to the National Night Out?
Yes, sir. I mean, the community, but if you would just give me a couple minutes, please.
Two minutes.
I wonder what CCC can do. White guy called me a nigger yesterday. I went to the police department. Well, I stopped the cop as many times as was happening. He wrote down disorderly conduct that I believe is a hate crime. And CCC ain't doing a damn thing about this. I'm not here to take the crumbs from Master's table, but I wanted, could you, Mr. Mayor, determine? If you called me a nigger, if you called me a nigger, what is my rights?
Here's the issue, is that right now, we have a forum at the end for people.
Well, you were talking about if you see something, say something. I'm talking about, we got a real problem here, and I'm not going to let you or anybody else sweep it under the rug. We have a bad problem with the police department. A real bad problem. CCC ain't talking to the right people, you know, and we should have a citizen advisory committee.
If you could please, we can bring this up if you want to talk to the City Manager about the police department later on.
I'll talk to the City Manager. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you for the two organizations putting on these events. I just want to say it's not an easy task. It takes a lot of effort for the two events that are going to be happening. So thank you very much. Moving on, item number ten.
Claims. Report from the Public Works Department regarding payment in the amount of fifty-four thousand and forty-seven dollars and fifteen cents to Langman Construction Incorporated of Rock Island, Illinois for an emergency sanitary sewer repair at Ninth Street and Twenty-Fourth Avenue.
Move to accept the report and authorize payment as recommended.
Second.
Then moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Mayberry.
Yes.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Tallinair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Genon.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Was that for all A through C?
No, we got to add them for some reason. I don't know why they're separated on.
The new format.
The new formatting in the agenda module.
Okay, we can add them together.
Yeah, we just probably need to amend our motions in the future to include all.
What has to be read off that way?
Doesn't have to be.
She can, he can combine.
I'll read the next two and then you can.
Well, you don't have to read the next two. You can just read the next one and we'll.
You don't need to.
Okay.
Report from the Public Works Department regarding payment in the amount of sixty-seven thousand five hundred dollars to the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency of Springfield, Illinois for annual fees for NPDES permits.
Motion to accept and authorize report, motion to accept the report and authorize payment is recommended for items B and C.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Roll call, please.
Hold on, hold on. I have a question.
Question. Okay, I'm sorry.
First of all, because of this new format, you see a little bit of confusion here. Are we supposed to have a roll call on each item or are you going to wrap them up in a bundle?
In this case, in the future, we'll wrap them up together, but because we only did this first one by error, we'll continue to do these next two individually and then from there forth, we'll do them as a bundle.
That's fine. Now, my question to this particular item, these permits that we have and the fees that we're paying, is this something that's on a temporary or time-limited basis or is this in perpetuity?
Alderman Spaghetti, those are in perpetuity. We have to pay those on an annual basis in order to maintain our discharge permit.
So it's not a temporary.
No, sir.
Permit.
No, sir.
Thank you.
Larry, if you would stay there, the next one I have a question about.
Okay, so we'll do these individuals to get this. Roll call, please. Oh, he made the motion for both of them?
Yeah, he made the motion.
Okay, then go ahead and ask the question. I'm sorry, I didn't hear that motion. Go ahead, Virgil, if you had another question.
She hasn't read off A and B. A and B, minus for C.
B and C, excuse me.
Okay, it states that we're buying salt for next year from a company out of Atlanta, Georgia. Is that correct? This was the end of the salt purchase from this previous year. We had to find some extra storage room, and so this is just the final purchase of that salt from last year. Of that salt, okay. Is there any way that we can go in conjunction with the other cities and maybe even the county as far as cutting the costs next year for this salt? Something we want to discuss in the very near future with all of them. Okay.
We do a state bid, so we bid through the entire state, so it's a very low rate.
So no one in the state could compete. That's why we got it from Atlanta, Georgia.
Well, everyone, so all the salt companies throughout the country compete for the bids and they were the lowest bidder this time.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, so the motion is for B and C. We have a motion, we have a second. Are we finished with discussion? Can I roll call, please?
Alderman Mayberry.
Yes.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Tallinair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Genon.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item number eleven.
Claims for the weeks of July seventh through July thirteenth in the amount of eight-hundred-and-eighty-three-thousand, five-hundred-and-seventy-nine dollars and thirty-five cents and July fourteenth through July twentieth in the amount of nine-hundred-and-two-thousand, seven-hundred-and-sixty dollars and seven cents. And payroll for the weeks of July third through July sixteenth, twenty seventeen, in the amount of one million, five-hundred-and-twenty-eight-thousand, nine-hundred-and-sixty-nine dollars and fifty-one cents.
Move to allow the claims and payroll. Second.
In second. Any discussion? Please.
Alderman Mayberry.
Yes.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Tallinair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Genon.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Thank you. Item number twelve.
ACH payments for the month of June in the amount of one million, seven-hundred-and-seventy-seven-thousand, one-hundred-and-two dollars and thirty-six cents.
Motion to approve the ACH payments.
Second. The move in second. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, for the people that are here tonight and the people at home, could you please, Judith, tell what ACH, what those initials stand for?
I'm not sure I know what the initials stand for.
Or maybe Stephanie.
Stephanie, good.
Stephanie.
So ACH stands for Automated Clearing House, and it's a term that is used for transferring funds from one bank account directly to another.
Thank you.
For the discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Mayberry.
Yes.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Tallinair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Genon.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item thirteen.
Purchase card claims for the period from May twenty-seventh through June twenty-sixth, twenty seventeen, in the amount of fifty-four thousand, seven-hundred-and-eighty-seven dollars and sixteen cents.
Move to approve the purchase card claims.
Second. Moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Mayberry.
Yes.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Tallinair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Genon.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item fourteen.
Report from the Information Technology Department regarding the purchase of upgrades to the Arc GIS and CityWorks Software Systems from Power Engineers of Meridian, Idaho, in the amount of seventeen thousand, four hundred dollars.
Move to approve the purchases recommended and authorize the City Manager to sign the agreement.
Second. Moved in second. Any discussion?
I have a question. This is regarding, my question is regarding the optional post-deployment production system support, which there's no cost listed for. I guess I'm wanting to know, Tim, are we going to need to have something like that after the system is installed?
I don't think so. I mean, we still have a module known as the Operation and Maintenance Manual that's part of the weather treatment plant that we may need to address at a later time, but as far as this project goes, it includes strictly the CityWorks and the Arc GIS pieces at this point, so there shouldn't be any conditional charges.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Alderman Mayberry.
Yes.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Tallinair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Genon.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item fifteen.
Report from the Public Works Department regarding bids for the Twenty-Fourth Street Water Main Extension south of RIFAC Project, recommending the bid be awarded to Langman Construction Incorporated of Rock Island, Illinois, in the amount of one-hundred-and-ninety-three-thousand, five-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars.
Move to award the bid as recommended and authorize the City Manager to execute the contract documents.
Second. Moved in second. Any discussion? None. Roll call, please.
Alderman Mayberry.
Yes.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Tallinair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Genon.
Aye.
Clark. Seven ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item sixteen.
Report from the Public Works Department regarding bids for the twenty-seventeen Brick Street Repair Program, recommending the bid be awarded to Centennial Contractors of the Quad Cities Incorporated of Moline, Illinois, in the amount of one-hundred-and-one-thousand, five-hundred-and-sixty-eight dollars.
Motion to award the bid as recommended and authorize the City Manager to execute the contract document.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Alderman Mayberry.
Yes.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Tallinair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Genon.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item seventeen.
Report from the Parks and Recreation Department regarding an agreement with First T of Davenport, Iowa, for development of a program and learning facility at Highland Springs Golf Course.
Move to approve the amendment as recommended and authorize the City Manager to execute the contract documents pending any minor modifications by the City Attorney.
Second. Moved in second. Any discussion?
I just wanted to comment that there were some things that I was asking about earlier today, and I met with the Parks Director, and I don't know if he spoke with the City Attorney, no. But there is some vagueness in terms of who's going to pay certain fees, and without going into a lot of detail, that's why I wanted the minor modifications clause in the motion. Just a wording thing.
Any other discussion? We could have roll call, please.
Alderman Mayberry.
Yes.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Tallinair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Genon.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item eighteen.
Report from the Human Resources Department regarding a special ordinance for prevailing wage rates in the City of Rock Island.
Move to consider suspend the rules and pass the ordinance.
Second. Moved in second. Is there discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Alderman Mayberry.
Yes.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Tallinair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Genon.
Aye.
Clark. Seven ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item number nineteen.
Report from the Human Resources Department regarding a resolution recommending continued participation in IMRF for elected officials of the City of Rock Island.
Motion to adopt the resolution as recommended.
Second. Moved in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Alderman Mayberry.
No.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Tallinair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Genon.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Six ayes, one nay. Motion carried.
Item twenty.
Report from the Finance Department regarding a resolution of the City of Rock Island, Illinois, declaring its official intent to reimburse certain capital expenditures from the proceeds of future debt issues.
Motion to adopt the resolution as recommended.
Second. Moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Mayberry.
Yes.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Tallinair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Genon.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, motion carried.
Item 21.
Report from the Finance Department regarding the municipal compliance reports for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2016 for the Police Pension Fund and the Fire Pension Fund.
Motion to accept the reports as recommended.
Second.
It's been moved in second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Mayberry.
Yes.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talon Air.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Genon.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, motion carried.
22.
Report from the Martin Luther King Junior Center Board of Directors requesting approval of amendments to the bylaws of the Martin Luther King Junior Community Center.
Move to approve the request as recommended.
Second.
They've moved in second. Uh, is there any discussion up here?
Yes.
If we can add, well, yeah, we'll, we'll let the audience speak here. You wanna let the audience speak first, is that what you want?
Yes, uh, most of these people, I believe, here are for this, so I would rather for them to speak and I will hold mine.
That's fine. So any, anybody that wishes to come up and speak about this, uh, please feel free to. If we can keep it a limited amount of time, five minutes, no more, and if people hear that it's being repeated, the same thing, then let's try not to repeat, uh, too often here.
And I did sign in, sir.
Yes, you do need to sign in, please.
I already did.
You can do it on that form versus the one in back, I'd appreciate it, please.
I already did.
No, instead of that one, there should be one in front of you, I believe?
No.
No, she is, when she goes here, she just states her name and she doesn't have to sign it.
Yeah, that's for, under, under the meeting.
You started signing.
There's no form there?
No, there was, the form was at the back and I signed the form at the back, but there's no one, there's not one here.
Yeah, okay, there was one sitting at that podium also, so, okay, as long as, if you have it in back, we'll work on that. Okay, thank you.
All right, my name is Linda Dothard, I live at 1615 14th Street, Rock Island, and I am going to speak, um, on the proposal to amend the bylaws at the Martin Luther King Center and I will tell you that I respectfully disagree with the Board of Directors at the King Center. I did attend the meeting last week and the bylaws change indicates that at least three members, uh, can become a Board of Directors and the rationale for that was that it was going to create more resources. First of all, the resources need to be clearly defined, what is that? What are the resources? And if those resources are financial, then the persons who are donating those resources, is their vision, vision and mission the same as the King Center? Or will that need to change? We've got many people in the city of Rock Island who I believe have untapped potential that can sit on that board. Also, we talked about the fact, it was talked about the fact that, um, one young lady got up and said, you know, the Martin Luther King Center needs to change because it needs to bring in more young people. There's a lot of young people in the city of Rock Island that can sit on that board. And they talked about term limits. And I believe that in making this decision, I don't really believe that the balance of Rock Island really agrees with this. It was indicated that had been talked about for like two years, that this didn't just come out about overnight. But the meeting was held last week on Thursday and today is Tuesday. Those meetings should have been involving other people unless I've missed something. Unless I've missed something, it should have been involving the community. I believe this decision to move forward with this is gonna have a long-reaching effect. Because when you start to involve people from outside, they say, um, that they don't have to live in Rock Island, but does that mean? Because the bylaws don't just say Quad Cities. Does that mean somebody from Western Illinois University who is a professor there, who has an interest on the board, can now become a member of the board? That has not been clearly defined, I don't believe. Uh, one gentleman said, "We have donated to the King Center $1.2 million and we're gonna continue to donate." So if you have already donated and you're continuing to donate, why does your seat on the board make a difference? Why do you have to sit on the board? And I just believe that it is an insult to the citizens of Rock Island to say that you are gonna bring someone in from the outside to make that decision. I respect the King Center Board of Directors, but I, I actually do not fundamentally agree with the direction of the city to make this happen. And I don't believe all the citizens of Rock Island agree to make this happen. I believe we have enough people in the city of Rock Island at all ages, at all ages, that can fill these seats. And I believe that it'll have long-reaching effects if you started here at the King Center Board. That means all boards in Rock Island will have the potential to do the same thing and I don't agree with that.
Okay, thank you.
So I respectfully disagree with this decision to move forward.
Appreciate your thoughts.
Amen.
Sir, if you could then put your name and address on there for us, please?
What is, what, why you need my name? Oh, okay. When Terry Brooks was Alderman, one of his main complaints, major complaints, was people from the outside who do not have the commitment, they don't share the condition. So, and, uh, they can't speak for what's in Rock Island, they're from the outside. And it is an insult. It's a blatant insult. We have people throughout the, the, the city, like Mrs. Doctor said, that is overqualified, but there's none that's underqualified. The city has a bad image with diversity, a real bad image, a very bad image. I give the city an F+ on that. You don't make the black peoples in the West End a vital interest. We're never gonna become a vital interest. And it, and if we don't become a vital interest, we're gonna start to boycott. We ain't gonna march, we gonna boycott the businesses. You'll be on your sidewalk, Mr. Mayor, in front of your house. You are gonna do something about diversity. For 18 years, the city had a stranglehold on this community. And the King Center, a stranglehold, I've seen very next to nothing happen 18 years. And, uh, and, and during the King Center days, they, they don't talk enough about diversity, you don't talk enough about, uh, the, the, the diversity that black people faces. Poor people, Mexicans, the Mexicans and the blacks in this community, I'm gonna talk about it because it's an issue. You all wanna pick and choose who you want to sit on these boards. The city needs a citizen advisory board independent of the police department. The, the CCC is not equipped, but, uh, I ain't gotta hold up too much time. We, we have a very big problem and, and, and a whole lot of it surrounds the King Center and the West End. The West End ain't starving, we, we, we've been taking the crumbs from master's table. Millions of dollars swept into Streep Park and nothing into the King Center for the, for the education, for the, the childrens in our community. The childrens in our community, you wanna take 500 and something thousand dollars and put up cameras, but you don't wanna get a dollar to a black kid to buy a book to read that's written by a black person to put some sense in their head. But you wanna watch us like we, we criminals. There are no more cameras going up in our neighborhood. 500 and plus thousand dollars to watch us, something is wrong. It's, it's a lot of police brutality, I want some money to be put in this thing for police brutality. Because that's an issue. It's an issue for the black children. Yes, it is, Mr. Mayor. I hope we can, uh, work on this, you and I and the city manager and, uh, my mayor, my, my Alderman, whom I love very much, Mr. Ivory Clark, he, he deserve the key to the city. He really do, it's not a laughing matter, he really do. He works be over and beyond. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak in regards to this issue? Has seen anybody else?
Vince Thomas, 1,021st Street. Mr. Mayor, I sent you a letter this morning and I, I crossed you, uh, read it.
Yes, I have.
Good. And, uh, so I wanna thank, uh, you and, uh, I wanna commend, uh, the, uh, the, uh, King Center Board for taking time to try to figure out a way to work their way into some kind of prosperous, uh, self-sufficient mode. But I do think that to vote, to change the makeup of the board to include non-citizens is a, is an admission that citizens of Rock Island lack the knowledge, talent and expertise to run organizations in the city. However, Mr. Mayor, you know, there's no doubt of capable people in this, uh, community because you appoint almost 325 people from the community to various boards and commissions, including the King Center. So, we have school boards, we have county boards, townships, we have DARI, we have the downtown, uh, well, that's the Downtown Economic Association. We have Rock Island Economic Growth, we have, uh, the Rock Island Housing Authority, we have, uh, Community Housing Solutions. We have, uh, several social service agencies, uh, we have Augustana College, we have all kinds of businesses in Rock Island. Many of them have boards and many of them run by capable Rock Island citizens. So, the point is that all these boards have several, if not some, Rock Island citizens as members of these boards. So it seems to me there isn't a lack of talented citizens willing to serve on the Board of Directors. Your problem is, I guess, the problem of the, of the, uh, King Center Board coming up with this kind of suggestion is that they have not really sought out who are these people who have these talents and this kind of knowledge to help them. So you can't convince me that if we reach out into other communities, we'll find people who are smarter than we are. At recent public hearing where there was only a handful of citizens, uh, that attended, the, uh, um, the board members explained that this proposal has been two years in the making. And what essentially, when we asked, are they seeking in these new board members from other cities? And it was that they would look for people who have connections. Connections to what? Well, connections to people who have money to bring into the center. So, however the end, you are the one who has to just pick those people. And I don't know who's gonna point out those people with the connections to you in other cities if you cannot find people here who have connections. And as the previous speaker, uh, mentioned and, and before that, um, Linda Dothard mentioned is that it is a kind of a rebuke to the citizens of the city, particularly of those more than 100 citizens who were involved in model cities from 69 to 75. And they volunteered for five years, helped to establish the King Center, to provide services for programs and services to people who needed help in a, in a, in a long neglected neighborhood.
You have about one more minute, so.
Right. And secondly, to help quote-unquote "bridge the gap" in a city that was far too long segregated. For, it was only in 1958 that the city became desegregated, when Arsenal Courts was officially desegregated by HUD. And I recently saw a, a documentary on Nat King Cole, the singer, in which, in that documentary, it mentions Rock Island was the only city where he filed a discrimination suit because he wasn't able to get a hotel room and, in fact, then he found a place at the former Brown's Funeral Home on 9th Street and 4th Avenue. Uh, with that kind of a history, I'm trying to say to you is that, on, speaking on behalf of, of the talented few, and I paraphrase that from, uh, W E B Du Bois.
Need to start cutting.
Once said, that this proposal be set aside until some more soul-searching is done by the mayor and the city council. It feels like a slap in the face, as you've heard some other people mention.
I just have one question.
If you, if you're gonna speak, you need to put your name and address and, please.
No, I took the pass. Sorry about that.
That's fine.
I did not intend to speak, but I have a question. I don't know if you can answer it now, my name is Johnny Woods and, and I would, I have a question. Are there citizens from other cities on like other boards, like, um, Moline, East Moline, whoever? That's a question I would like answered. Does anybody know that?
Not that, at this point, not that I'm aware of in most of them. This one is a little, unique because the Martin Luther King Center is a separate, uh, operating, uh, organization under a 501(c)(3) and they have, we, a long time ago, I say we, the consul and mayor, a number of years ago, put in the bylaws, the ability to do this. Where that ability has not been put into the bylaws of other committees and boards that the city has. And so that's the difference between it, so now I'm not aware of anybody else, uh, at this point.
If I wanted to be on the board, how would I do it? I've been a citizen here since I was eight years old and telling my age, I'm 66, that's a long time.
There's, there's, you can come fill an application, you can come down and fill an application out, or you can do it on the internet. Uh, the forums are out there to fill an application out.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Or contact your Alderman.
Or, could do that too. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? All right, hearing none, I guess we're to the councils or, uh, once again, I guess, let, I mean, I'll, I'll just kick this off real quick, if you don't mind. Um, what, I guess a thought that I have is that this change gives the board, or gives me, the option to appoint people. It doesn't mean it has to be, by the way. And it by no means is it indicating that there is not people in the city of Rock Island that have the talent or the intelligence or the will to serve. There are a lot of people in the city of Rock Island that have the talent and the knowledge and the will to set, uh, to, to be on the board. And so this is not limiting that, they're saying that there is not, that it's not there, uh, by any means. They're not, that's not a statement that the council's making or the city, or the mayor, uh, or, or even the board, uh, as far as that goes. And so, and it does open it up to people, once again, you talk about living in Rock Island, there are a number of people out there that live in other cities of the Quad Cities here that used to live in Rock Island and lived a good portion of their life, that maybe got married and moved to a different city in the Quad Cities but has, uh, uh, in their heart, uh, and, and the vision of Martin Luther King Center. So, uh, it does open it up for those people, uh, to get involved that used to live or grew up in Rock Island and that would like to return and serve in some way. So it does give that opportunity. And then I was gonna make a comment about applying, is that, once again, uh, the issue is sometimes applying, we don't get many applications in. And so, once again, that's, if you know of people out there that would, uh, you've, that would like to serve, uh, please have them fill an application out and we will definitely review that, uh, when it comes time. So I don't know if there's other comments?
Anybody else have any?
You have nothing to say? Okay, thank you. Could I see by people standing up in the audience, who wants this to be? Who wants three people from outside the city of Rock Island to serve on the Martin Luther King Center? Would you please stand up?
Or an option for them to?
Seeing none, I know who I'm talking, okay, we have one. Thank you. One person out of the approximately 50 people in this room, okay? Well, thanks Vince. This discussion has been going on supposedly for two years. I have asked, last Thursday night again, who would be appointed to this board? They tell me that there's been no recommendations or no names or whatever thrown out there, which I don't believe, okay? You can tell me anything that don't mean- You can tell me anything, that don't mean I have to believe it, okay? This community center, it says Rock Island, it says Martin Luther King Center up at the top, and it says Rock, City of Rock Island below. This is not the Quad Cities Community Center, okay? I asked for history of how this was built. I was chairman of Martin Luther King Center in 1976. They have conveniently lost the history stating that this can be done through a 501(c)(3). I've asked for this, I still haven't got it. I want to see it for myself. There's too many lies going on, okay? The people in Rock Island are not as dumb as people think. This is our city. This ain't Coal Valley City, this ain't Pleasant Valley, or Bettendorf. I paid taxes here, and lived here since 1965, and the majority of the people I know have been here that long, or longer. We don't need nobody coming in overseeing the city of Rock Island. If we can't do it ourself, there's something wrong. As I stated when I ran for office, and whether people liked it or not, the city of Rock Island is the armpit of the Quad Cities. I ran to change this, okay? We can change it. We're not going to change it by getting people from somewhere else. The people in this room can change this. This is Rock Island. We are special. I came here in 65, nobody came here to go to Moline, or East Moline, or Davenport. The people that migrated here from the south, and from Chicago, came to Rock Island, because it was the place to be. The other politicians prior to me destroyed it, okay? We had our own business community on Ninth Street where the Martin Luther King Center is today. We had parking meters on there, you got tickets. We, as black people, were not allowed to go downtown to the two theaters down there. This is racism. We had our own theater, the Rialto, the Rat House, because when you went in there and watched the movies that were three to six months old already, you had to sit with your feet up in the seat because rats ran right through there, okay, to eat the popcorn and candy. They tore it down to build the Martin Luther King Center. I know the history of it. The reason it was named Martin Luther King Center was because we had a contest, for a naming contest, and we gave the winner, I don't remember who it was, $50. That center could have been named Adolf Hitler Center, Ronald Reagan Center. It was named Martin Luther King. There is no history that Martin Luther King ever set his foot in this city. He flew into the Moline Airport, and went to Davenport, and was commemorated. This is a special place. This is the future of Rock Island. And as President Dothert, who was president of the school board, stated, that there was someone that said that their organization had gave a million and a half dollars to the King Center. That is my colleague, Dave Geenan. When he votes tonight, he's not supposed to be voting for the Victor and Doris Day Foundation, he's supposed to be voting for the people in the Seventh Ward. Vince fought to get this ward system. Why? Because it was so segregated and so dirty that five of the seven aldermen in this city all lived within five blocks of each other. We still, until this man came in office, we still had dirt alleys in the west end of Rock Island, but we'd got millions of dollars from community development block grant money to fix those alleys and to asphalt them and to fix them up.
Try to line, other people have something to say, so we need to try to.
Well, I hope they do. I hope they say what I say, because what I'm saying is the truth, and there's too many lies going on in this city. Too much lying going on, okay? That stuff's got to end if this city is going to go forward. I was elected by the people of the Second Ward, Mayor. You didn't vote for me, okay? And nobody up at this table could vote for me because they didn't live there. I represent the Second Ward, people that have businesses there, people that have children there. They tell me what they want to see happen down here. They don't trust nobody sitting around this table. Why? They've been lied to for 50 years. I will vote for this not to happen, not to do that. That is my vote. I am finished, and if somebody else has something to say, and I feel that I need to say something else, I will do that. But I'll give this to Alderman Geenan. He had a lot to say.
I'll go before you, if you don't mind.
You were First Ward Alderman, I asked you if you had something to say, and you said no.
No, I didn't say that, you missed out on me. May I see Jerry Jones up for a second?
Thank you, Mr. Jones, I just got a couple of questions for you here. This is only one of the bylaws that actually were changed. Can you think of a couple others that we changed during this last two years?
Term limits are going to be changed, but even more important one are the responsibilities and duties of the board members, especially among, especially in regards to the amount of time and energy that is spent giving back to the Martin Luther King Center.
Okay. During our discussions in our retreats, did we ever, did you ever hear one person say that citizens in Rock Island were not qualified to do this job?
Since my return in this discussion on this matter, that has not been said.
That has not been said.
The opposite has been said.
Okay, thank you, because you were there with me, and Mr. Levin was there also. Next, we discussed competition in today's world of how grants are competitive now. From just the time when you left the King Center to coming back now, the state of Illinois, there was a big budget deficit, where we weren't getting cash funds in. What is the competition that we see now for funds that was 15 years ago was a no-brainer?
I'm going to try not to speak out of turn, but one local example is that with the Rock Island Community Foundation, they're seeing more applications for funding than they've ever seen before, and that's the case with most funding organizations at this time. There are more 501(c)(3)'s than there's ever been, and it continues to grow, and so, when you're writing grants, and when you are trying to gather resources, and it's not just money, it's friends, it's volunteers, it's highly competitive now.
Okay, okay. This, that might have another question, but if you can hang, most of the board is, what is going to, most of the board's still going to be comprised of?
Seventy-two percent is the smallest amount that we would have as Rock Island citizens.
So, only, less than, less than 30% would actually be from outside of Rock Island?
At its highest, yes.
Okay, okay. Who would benefit regardless of who's on the board? Who would be, who would receive the most benefit? Families from where?
Oh, Rock Island will, has to remain central to the King Center programming for a variety of reasons. Many of our service, short answer, Rock Island citizens.
Okay. So, before, our hands may have been tied by saying that we can't add three more people from anywhere, from the Quad Cities, on the board. Our hands may have been tied, now our hands are just not tied, we can compete better, and also, the benefit still returns homes, the benefit still comes home, is that how you see it?
It opens the opportunity, yes. It's not as hamstrung or tied, as you say.
Yeah. So, the mayor's, and the final thing, the mayor still has the final say. You being a city, a employee of the city of Rock Island, the mayor still has the final word.
Absolutely.
So, if you, if we made a recommendation, we just would be bringing that to the mayor.
Correct.
And if I'm not mistaken, he would, we still.
I don't understand that.
But don't you understand?
The mayor puts, brings the name forth, the council votes on it.
The council will vote. So, the mayor, but the mayor's the one that brings the name. We don't, the council wouldn't even see the name if the mayor don't bring it.
Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification.
Hey, I agree, you have to speak for the peoples of your community.
I'm not always going to agree.
I mean.
I'm not always going to agree with what you agree with.
We can agree to disagree.
That's right, that's what we have to do right now.
We're.
I respect you, I respect you.
Had your opportunity, so, yeah.
But sometimes, we're not going to agree, and I respect everyone that came up here to speak. I can't, it was people that love Rock Island that came up here to speak, but as I said earlier, the board loves Rock Island, and what we were doing was trying to see what was best for Rock Island. We weren't trying to slap anyone in the face and say that Rock Island citizens couldn't do it, but we said, how can, what is best practices? What does research say that boards are doing? Keep in mind, this is not like the park board, this is not like the library board, and those things. This, the King Center gets, their employees paid by the city of Rock Island, but the city of Rock Island, they really don't pay for all the grants and the programming that you see at the King Center. That's, that means we have to go out and get that funding. So, one of the good things we got, we got a realtor on the board, and he became chairman. What he did was, he used his skills and said, "How can we rent out some of these spaces in the King Center?" And so, we, three places that were vacant are rented out now. Whatever, we don't have a lawyer on the board. Maybe there's a lawyer in Rock Island that wants to be on the board, we're not going to knock it.
I'm sorry, I don't want to cut you short, but in fairness, we've got to keep everybody, keep it timewise.
Thank you so much, sir.
Thank you.
I respect what everyone had to say, but I do respect the work that the board has done, and with that being said, we'll end it there.
Is there any other discussion?
Yes, I'd like, since Jerry came up, I'd like to ask him, and I believe I asked you before, what year did the Martin Luther King Center become a 501(c)(3) organization?
1975.
1975, okay. And I don't think you can answer this question, but perhaps our city attorney can. You're awake, okay? Okay, well, you're looking down. I just wanted to make sure, so I didn't have to repeat the question. Okay, are there any other city entities that are 501(c)(3) besides the Martin Luther King Center?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Do you see a problem with that in the future if we, for whatever reason, approve this, that perhaps the park board, or one of the other departments, want to become a 501(c)(3) organization?
I don't, I don't think that would be an option for the other city departments for a host of reasons. The, the King Center is a unique entity in that it delivers programming and receives funding as a not-for-profit. It's, and because of that, it is only a quasi-governmental body. I mean, it is, it is certainly part of our body politic, but it's, it is a standalone entity in many ways on its own. I suppose, without actually looking at the municipal code's provisions on this point, that our Home Rule Authority would conceptually permit the city to create subdivisions, certain subdivisions of the city that could become incorporated and function as not-for-profits. That would present state constitutional issues that I think would probably wind up coming out, saying that, no, you can't do that.
But the King Center doesn't fall under that, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
So, any other further discussion? Yes?
I have a question I would like to ask the chairman of the board, David Levin, if you wouldn't mind coming up, and while he's coming up, I'd like to say that I know that this is an emotional issue for a lot of people. I see a lot of people in the audience that I know and respect, and this is going to be one of these issues that you cannot please everybody, so, we know some people, no matter what we decide, are going to be happy, and others are going to be unhappy. I've tried to listen to constituent input, to community input from others who are not in my ward, from the Martin Luther King Center board members, which I attended one of their meetings. I've listened to council members' input when I've had the opportunity to talk to them, and I have tried to examine what I think Martin Luther King would do, given this question if he were to be here today. So, the question I have, one or two questions, David, do you view the, the King Center as a private facility for Rock Island only?
We took a look at this issue, James, when the board met over the last couple of years, and as I explained at our meeting, our board, over the last two or three years, really looked at itself within and outside of the organization. We wanted to take pretty much a non-effective Board of Directors, and make ourselves look within itself as to who we are, what we do, and what we are looking at for the institution within the community. We want this institution to become more macro than micro. When we're looking at funding, when we're looking at programming, we want it to be a true community center, and just, instead of just a west-end Rock Island, below-the-hill organization. That went out a long time ago, in difference to Alderman Mayberry. This institution is for the entire community, for the entire community of the Quad Cities. So, Berlinda Tyler Jamison was our, our leader for our strategic planning session that happened over a number of months, and we looked at each one of the board members as to what we could do for the institution, what we could do within that for the city and for the community. We looked at what strengths and weaknesses each one of us had, both in diversity, both in makeup of our professional nature, both in gender, as well as sex, and we wanted to know exactly what we could do, looking outside of just Rock Island, for funding, for programming, and for socialization of all of our residents, not just the key citizens of Rock Island. We looked at our funding when we had the large economic development program to expand the Martin Luther King Center, and as we stated, 50% of that money came from the city of Rock Island, and we thank you very much. We also obtained over $14 million from outside of the community, and we continue to do that through Jerry and his staff for grants and funding. We will continue to do that, but in order to make a larger splash within the city and the community, we want to look outside of our, of our, of our own citizens. What would be the problem if a John Deere representative, or a Monard Woodman representative, or a Royal Neighbors representative, or a member from the arsenal were to come along to make this more outside of the scope of the city of Rock Island, so we could involve more citizens, more diversity, and more good to the community and the citizens of Rock Island?
Couple more quick questions, if I might, while you're up at the podium. Are there any board members who are dissenting in terms of the proposal that you're offering forward today?
Good question, James. We had a board meeting two weeks ago, we had a vote then, and we have a vote before that, 100% unanimous for this proposal.
And then, lastly, the question I have is, you're trying something new to try to enhance the Martin Luther King Center and its programs, and the services that it provides to people. Would you be willing to reevaluate on a yearly basis, perhaps, and report back to the council whether or not your plan is working?
Absolutely.
So that we can kind of reevaluate things, because if we decide to change this today, that does not mean that we couldn't change it again, or change it back?
Absolutely.
The next time we looked at it.
Absolutely, and one other thing that I should mention to you. Just within the last three months, we asked each one of the board members, from within again, what strengths and weaknesses they had pertaining to giving, pertaining to reaction and action within the Martin Luther King Center, as well as activities and helping out in any function, and we had them rank in, in different perspectives as to their weaknesses and their strengths. We then looked at the, the different makeup of the board, and those are the things that we will present to the mayor, as well as our own board members.
I have no more questions, thank you.
I have a little bit. I've been to the King Center probably twice a year for the 10 years I've been here. I've been here, probably been in the King Center 20 times. Every time I've seen Vince Thomas has been there. He's been working hard, he's been voicing an opinion. We don't always agree with Vince's opinion, I don't always agree with Vince's opinion, but he is there working hard for the King Center, and I agree. And I agree with Vince Thomas today, along with the other thirty-five souls I see out there. In this board, I respect their choices and their vision, but they are not listening to the community of the Rock Island Kings Junior Center. And their community is right there. Thank you.
Yes, uh, David, before you leave, um, I was at the meeting last week, last Thursday, like yourself, there's a handful of people there. The one thing-
We had twenty-two people there.
Well, that's a handful out of a city of thirty-eight thousand. Right? We have, we got more people here tonight than we had there, but that's immaterial. One thing that was brought up to me afterwards, females, the only female that was there by, I believe, ma- mayor statute, she has to be there, is that correct? Well, that's right, you weren't there, were you?
I was not there.
Stephanie was the only female sitting up there.
Okay.
Okay?
Yes.
This city has got sixty percent of women, females. And as far as I know, there's never been a man have a child in this world. These women of all races are producing the kids that come to the Martin Luther King Center. Now, perhaps there are some female, white, Hispanic, black, Oriental, or whatever, that sit on the King Center board. This was an all-male show, basically, because Stephanie has to be on there. If she was a male, there'd be no, none. We need men and women on these boards. This city has represented sixty percent of the people in Rock Island. The women are producing the children that come to the King-
Mr. Mayberry, we agree with you.
Well, then, why, why is this-
Mr. Mayberry, we agree with you, and that's what I just said before. We looked at the makeup of our board of directors, and we looked at the strengths and the weaknesses. Gender is one of those issues.
The reason-
But what have you decided to do about it?
The reason is, the reason why is because they haven't applied. Or, I mean, once again, it's before me, so we need them to apply. There's nothing wrong with that. We need people to fill out an application to be considered.
We've heard that through these federal jobs and through the unions and through the police departments and the fire departments, they don't apply. That's garbage, okay? Like, I asked you the other day, Mayor, downstairs, to name me ten black people that you know in a city that's got over ten thousand black people, you, besides Ivory and me, you could not name me one black person that you know, and you're the mayor over this whole city. I don't understand that.
Mayor, I'd like to call the vote on this issue.
Yes. Thank you.
I'd like to call the vote.
Call the vote.
May I make a point of clarification?
I'd like to call the vote.
Just for a second, about 501(c)(3)'s? The 501(c)(3), as recognized by the IRS, means, as far as I know, having been served on a 501(c)(3) for years, is that the board does the hiring. The board only hires one person, the director of the, of the program, of the, the project, of the organization, according to the 501(c)(3). That person does all the rest of the hiring. In this instance, in the King Center, the current director was not hired by the board. He didn't apply to you or anyone else. He was appointed by the city manager. According to what is the regulations now, he still reports to the city manager first. I don't care what the board tells him, he has to get the city manager to agree with the board's decision. So, there's a-
Thank you, Mayor.
-conflicts here. It's not a freestanding 501(c)(3).
Thank you.
City attorney, is that correct, what he just said?
No.
That's not correct?
No.
Okay.
There's nothing in the IRS regulations that says that the board of a 501(c)(3) has to do the hiring. 501(c)(3) status has to do with tax exemption and ability to receive charitable donations that are tax deductible. The governing rules for the board and operations of a 501(c)(3) are set by its bylaws, which are a separate document, completely separate and apart from anything that would be contained in the Internal Revenue Code.
So, when these grants and that are applied for and they get the money, do the staff at the Martin Luther King Center get part of that money on top of the salary that we, the taxpayers, are paying them?
No, 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 no.
Okay.
Okay? Ready to call the vote?
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Uh, what, could you repeat the motion? Send your, uh-
Move to approve the request is recommended.
Hey!
Oh, he was asking her.
A report from the Martin Luther King Junior Center Board of Directors requesting approval of amendments to the bylaws of the Martin Luther King Junior Community Center.
Okay, has been motioned?
Motion whether or not to approve the request is recommended.
Okay, we got, we got a motion, we got a second. Roll call, please.
Alderman Mayberry?
Absolutely no.
Spargattas?
Yes.
Tallinair?
No.
Parker?
Aye.
Shep?
Aye.
Geenan?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Five ayes, two nays, motion carried.
Thank you. Item number twenty-three.
Report from the city clerk regarding a request from Olivet Baptist Church for a street closing of Twenty-first Avenue from Eleventh Street to Twelfth Street on Sunday, August twentieth, twenty-seventeen, from twelve-thirty PM to four-thirty PM.
Motion to approve the request is recommended?
Second.
The move is second, is there a discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Twenty-four.
Report from the city clerk regarding requests from Kavanaugh's Hilltop Tavern to have outdoor entertainment with sound amplification and the outdoor sale of alcohol in the fenced-in parking lot from noon to eleven PM on Saturday, August twenty-sixth, twenty-seventeen, at twelve-twenty-eight Thirtieth Street.
Motion to approve the request is recommended, subject to complying with all liquor license regulations and subject to be closed down early if noise complaints received.
Second.
The move is second, is there a discussion?
Just want to recognize that, uh, Tim, Tim Kavanaugh's here, uh, joined us tonight for this, and, uh, thank you for having your business here in Rock Island.
Yeah, thank you. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item twenty, twenty-five.
Okay. Report from the city clerk regarding a request from Greater Antioch Missionary Baptist Church for a street closing of Tenth Avenue between Fourteenth Street and Fourteenth and a Half Street on Tuesday, July twenty-fifth, twenty-seventeen, from five-thirty PM to eight PM.
Move to approve the request is recommended?
Second.
Move is second, any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are at item twenty-six, other business.
Mayor, I, I would just like to comment very briefly on, uh, the motion we passed tonight. I know that many folks are gonna be, um, upset at the decision that we made, uh, but I think Alderman Spargattas kinda hit it right on, on the head there, is that this is a, a policy that our board, who we've empowered to run the King Center, determined over time unanimously, um, they feel it's a decision that it's gonna help. Having worked with Jerry Jones in my previous, uh, position of employment, I, I know he's a commensurate professional who understands the nonprofit world just as, just as well, if not better, than most in the Quad Cities community. And, um, I believe that, just as with any ordinance, uh, bylaw resolution, they can be changed. And if this is not working for the city, uh, then we'll change it. But in the end, if we've opened up the door for the possibility of having people who maybe work for our top employers, who live in a different city, who come into the King Center, they get to know the mission better at the grassroots level, they see the need, they see the work that the current board members are doing and future board members will be doing, and the staff, how hard they're working, and they think, well, I'm connected to a foundation, or I'm connected to resources, volunteers, et cetera. If we've opened up that umbrella a little wider, and there's good things that come in, then I think we did good work today. And if we didn't, we can own up to it and we can correct it. And that's all, I just wanted to comment on that. My other piece of business, though, is, um, on Friday, we saw in the newspaper that the, uh, CEO of the Quad Cities, uh, Chamber of Commerce had resigned. Um, I had asked staff, and I know others did, for, uh, information about money that we have put into this organization. We got a snapshot report that from fiscal year oh-nine-ten to calendar year twenty-seventeen budget, uh, we're looking at a sum total of five-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars. And, um, I am at a serious loss in understanding how that amount of money equates to a positive return on investment for this community. Uh, the money that we give to this group, uh, and we have other groups that we sponsor through this fund, the Bay State Regional Planning Commission, and the Arsenal Lobbying, which I'm not taking an issue with, I support those, uh, comes from our gaming revenue, comes from the money that we get from having jumbers in this community. Past couple of years, we've been looking at sixty-eight thousand dollars a year. Our annual budget for sidewalks is eighty thousand dollars. I look at this perspective over time, because that's what we have to do as the fiduciary managers of the money. And I think of, if we would've agreed in two thousand nine that until twenty-seventeen, we're gonna put half a million dollars into the downtown, we're gonna put an additional half a million dollars into College Hill, we're gonna put an additional half a million dollars into reclaiming, uh, dirt or gravel alleys, uh, we could've seen those benefits and, 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 and pointed to that as concrete evidence to say, that's where our money went, that's our investment, and the return helps the community. Uh, I assume we're paid through for twenty-seventeen. Uh, if the vote were today, I would vote to leave. Last year, this is not for all the council members, but some of us were here, we had a, a presentation from the CEO, who's since resigned. Uh, there were many questions, specific questions about what's the benefit of Rock Island been as other communities get shown, and they don't pay, and we pay, and others pay. And, uh, having learned a little bit more in my final point on this, uh, over the past couple of years, in terms of how businesses decide where to go, um, big or small, I feel like the business is gonna go to the city that makes the most sense. And whether that's Davenport, whether that's Rock Island, whether it's Moline, Mylan, uh, that business is gonna decide what makes the most sense for them. And we have to understand that culture, that we could pay all this money to an outside group, we've tried an outside retail consultant, got us nothing. And I think if we're honest with ourselves, we could look at this five-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars and think, uh, we could've gotten something a little more concrete. So, I expect this issue's gonna come up. I have talked personally to a number of my colleagues up here who share that same concern. And I think every city should be asking, if we're paying this kind of money, uh, what specifically are we getting back, uh, for the taxpayer's dollar here?
Is there anything else for-
Yeah, to add to that, uh, if memory serves me right, our good mayor was here that night when Mrs. Barnes-
I was in the audience, yes.
Well, you were a part of the Quad City Chamber of Commerce?
No, I was not here on be- behalf of them.
Oh, well, I thought you were.
I was not.
Anyway, we asked them what businesses had been brought into Rock Island, correct? And no one could name us, not even one.
Well, and to add, and to add to that, Alderman Mayberry, we, we were told we would have a follow-up, and there wasn't.
And that was what, back in February, March?
Yeah.
Something like that. So, the new members weren't even aware of it.
Right.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have, anything else they'd brought forward?
One last thing.
Can I, can I just-
Oh, go, go ahead.
I encourage everyone in the audience, and I thank you very much for coming tonight. And please apply either online or just, uh, the, the mayor has an open-door policy, so does the city manager. Uh, you don't, just walk in, say good morning, and, uh, ask for an application, uh, and go to work for the King Center, uh, on that board. I mean, apply, and they'll go, there's a vetting process, and there's a commitment and all that. And, uh, if you can't beat 'em, join 'em. And, uh, so we'll go on, and it'll, it'll move forward.
Okay.
Last thing, yes. Uh, my neighbor, Mrs. Helen Yakovich, passed away this past week, and her husband and her son both were firefighters until they retired, and the husband passed away. So, this needs to be known, this is a family that loved Rock Island, firefighter family, and they both passed away.
It's a loss.
Mr. and Mrs. Geis from the Seventh Ward, okay.
Yeah. So, there were several people signed up to speak, I think they already did, but is there anybody here? No, yeah, Sandra, did she, she, Sandra, okay. Excuse me, I'm sorry, I just start, start the top of the list. Sandra, yeah?
I also have a business here in Rock Island, I've had a business here almost twenty-eight years. Lucky cab.
Real quick, can you give your name and address?
Oh, sure, sure.
Yes, please. You don't, you don't have to write, I've got that here, but if you just want to speak into the microphone, let people know.
Okay. All right. I've had a business here in Rock Island for about twenty-eight years. And, um, it's the taxicab, Lucky Cab. And, um, we have, uh, an issue now, or I have an issue, um, about an ordinance, Rock Island City Ordinance, Chapter Eight, Article Seven, Section blah, blah, blah. Anyway, um, I am credentialed, well, first of all, I will go back and, uh, read the letter that I, I think I sent it to the mayor? No, I sent it to Judith. My name is Sandra Cisco, I have been in the taxicab business for twenty-eight years under the name of Lucky Enterprises. We work out of a building at seven-thirty-six Thirty-seventh Avenue in Rock Island. I have followed all the rules and provided a service for the community for that length of time. My drivers are credentialed to provide transportation for states, hospitals, major corporations, the airport, Arsenal, so on and so forth. We do background checks, driving records, National Sex Offender Registry checks, DOT drug tests, copies of social security cards, um, drivers' forms for the different, um, states. We do code and conduct forms that they sign, they have to go through a text of, of how to handle patients, uh, 'cause that's what we do, is medical transport, mostly. Uh, we have to prove to our customers, and some even require that they be additionally insured. Now comes the city of Rock Island, asking us to do the same with them, and drivers paying another twenty dollars. Okay? About fifty dollars per car, really? I don't have a problem paying for a city license, but the same tests as we have for the state, I could give you copies of. Why do I have to pay fifty dollars for the same tests? So, I belong to the International Taxi and Livery Association for years, and, um, we are legitimate taxicab companies, but in the city, you have Uber, you have Lyft, you can get a sticker for your car that says Uber the day after you get out of prison. That's kinda scary. Um, they don't have to have proper, uh, insurance, they don't have to, they can have regular license plates. We are fighting Uber, but their pockets are deep. But I would like to propose that the only test that might be needed for the city of Rock Island might be fingerprint. Even that does not seem to be that important when we already do all the other testing. We run all of our drivers through a company called OkiScreen, and we could give the city copies of these tests if that would help eliminate some costs. We are struggling to keep operating with Uber being around, and nothing is being done about them. The police aren't picking them up when they're down at the, uh, the wireless, Iowa Wireless. If they see a sticker, they could pull it over, they pull us over and check our credentials. So, I would just like to have that ordinance changed, so that we don't have to do the exact same thing as we already have done and paid sixty, seventy dollars for, and then pay another fifty to do it for the city of Rock Island. We'd just like to give you our copies of what we've already had done. So, that's, that's where I'm coming from.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Um, going down the list here, Martin, um, she's still here, Slate? Did she just, oh, there she's over there.
Well, she's coming up, city manager tweet, will you get us a report on, uh, the Lucky Cab Company and get us a report on that?
Yeah, it's already in work, so we're working with, uh-
Okay, thanks.
-police and legal, and there'll be a recommendation to you-
That's fine.
...next month.
Sure.
Might have to be additionally insured if we have to go through all this other stuff.
So, we're looking at it, and we'll be in touch with you, and plan to make a recommendation here in three weeks to the council.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, good evening. As many of you are probably aware, on June second, Rochelle Davis was brutally murdered in her home. in her home. Her eleven-year-old son, Devari...
Excuse me, can she give us her name and address?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Shalee Martin, forty-five eleven Ninth Avenue, Rock Island. As many of you are probably aware, on June second, Rochelle Davis was brutally murdered in her home. Her eleven-year-old son, Devari, was also a victim. He required air flight to Peoria and brain surgery. Her sixteen-year-old nephew, Jabari Robinson, was also attacked. He was treated at Unity Point and released. Luckily, he was able to escape the scene and get help for his cousin, who probably wouldn't be here today if not for that. Rochelle was a loving and hardworking mother who leaves behind three children, Torian, who's twenty-four, Devari, who is now twelve, and Serena De Hughes, six, not to mention her mother, siblings, lots of nieces, nephew, and an entire community that loved her. What started as me owning a very small business in Rock Island, just offering to donate a portion of my profits, turned into something much larger that we most definitely did not anticipate or plan for. Making one phone call to Tim Kavanaugh, Kavanaugh's Hilltop, and another to Hass Construction, and about five hundred more probably in the last month, well, that's probably light. We wanted just more donations, and what's now turned into what we're referring to as more of a benefit. This community has went above and beyond to wrap their arms around Rochelle's family, proving that awful things do go on in this world, and literally in our own backyards, but there are good people in the world. Due to the tremendous involvement of the entire community from every walk of life, we would ask you to proclaim July twenty-ninth as Rochelle Davis Community Day. While we saw you do proclamations tonight, that's great, but we really felt it's important, Mr. Mayor, that you attend and present to the family personally. We also sincerely invite every member of this council to attend. We encourage you to invite your constituents. The Kavanaugh takes place at Kavanaugh's Hilltop this Saturday from four to eight. We have Dwayne Hodges and Sherri Jones from Ten of Souls. If you haven't seen them, you should, probably at Kavanaugh's this weekend. We also have Sean Kistler performing. Food was generously donated by more people than I can tell you, including King Foods of Rock Island stepped up immediately, as well as people I don't know, offering to smoke food, prepare food, community-wide. So we're a social media-driven society now, so you can find more information, so don't take it more time, on Facebook, if you search Rochelle Davis Memorial Fund or Benefit. We really do sincerely ask each and every one of you to attend. We encourage you to ask others, obviously. And working with her son, Torian, we did draft language for proclamation, which I can just give to you, and we've never done this before, so we are absolutely appreciative of any tweaking you want to do.
Well, thank you very much, and it's a very compassionate view, and of course, everybody else that's been involved. It's a great cause, and there's no doubt appreciate, I'm sure the family does, what you people are doing, and it's outstanding. I do have it on my calendar, and I do plan on being there.
Okay.
If you get to see, if you want to leave that sample of that, that's fine, we can get that.
I plan on being there also, ma'am. I grew up with Rochelle, and so I want to thank you guys for all you're doing awesome.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, ma'am. Okay. Joni Woods, still here, signed up? Oh, did I miss that?
He spoke earlier.
And then we got Tom Geis. Geis?
Good evening, council. I'm Tom Geis. I live at fifteen oh eight Forty-second Street in Rock Island. And my neighbor at fifteen twelve has had an ongoing issue with a broken water line, city water line, coming into their property. Started last winter, where he had frozen ice across the sidewalks all winter long. I called when the things thawed out, and water started running, I called Pat O'Brien at the City Public Works, and they said they'd check into it, and it's been going since May that I called, trying to get something done about it. I understand now, or a couple of weeks ago, a contract has been awarded to a local plumber to fix the water problem. But in the meantime, the city workers come over and they actually dug a ditch from the neighbor's sidewalk to the street, allowing water to run down the street. Another issue I've had from that problem is the fact that coming home Sunday night, I drove through standing water in the front of my driveway. I had a rubber grommet and a bolt pierce my tire, and now I have a ninety-dollar bill for tire repairs done. So the bottom line is, I like to have some type of guarantee that this water problem's going to be fixed. I understand the contract has been awarded, but my sidewalk now is starting to sink. There's probably mud underneath my sidewalk. I like to have time for that to dry out, and to have my sidewalk either mud-jacked, replaced, or whatever, to make sure, because I just spent two thousand dollars last year having mudjacking done to level out our sidewalks, now we have sidewalks that are sinking again. I'd like to have some type of guarantee. I realize you have a lot of problems here in the city of Rock Island. I'm also a taxpayer, like to have something done about it. And I appreciate a little attention, even though there's many issues going on in the city of Rock Island, just like to have a little attention done to it. My alderman, Dave Gleeman, has been up and looked at our property, and it's been an ongoing issue for months now. So I'd like to have something done about it, some type of guarantee that my sidewalk will be straightened out.
It sounds like the alderman and Public Works, everybody's involved and is aware of it, so I'm sure they'll get to the bottom of it, and please keep the communication going, as I assume they will also.
Okay, very good.
Is it Derwin Gray, signed up?
Is it Stevenson? That's fine.
Stevenson?
Yeah.
Can I read the writing? If you could just also tell us your names and where you live.
First off, I want to say God is good.
If you don't mind, just so we got the right, could you give your name and your address?
My name is Derwin Gray, two nineteen Twenty-first Street.
Thank you.
First off, I want to say God is good. And then second, I just want to thank all my family for being here. So I wrote something to my siblings, and just kind of off the strength of just what we're dealing with and continuing to deal with, and I'd like to share with you guys. To my mother, Othea Bester, and my siblings, Sheena, Loja, Rolando, Tavon, Lowly, I say this to you on this forum, nobody truly understands what we feel or how deeply scarred our souls are. Neither do we expect them to understand, but what we do ask for is respect while we find our way through this all. I was told in the beginning, everyone would go back to their lives, the how you doing, the phone calls, and the texts would stop, that some people would only show concern just to be in the midst of conversation and gossip, that people would start to show the truth in who they really were to us, that people would assume we were no longer in pain and would begin to disregard, disrespect, and disappoint us by their actions. I was also told God is the only way we will get through this, and I will never stop believing And just to continue to pray and be there for each other in the way we have. Let's continue to fight for our brother and our mother's youngest son. As hard as this continues to be, I'm proud of us all. We've accomplished so much, and it's true, we aren't getting a rightful credit as far as the media goes, but we'll let God sort that out. I struggle with what to do next for this city that people want me to save, and all I keep thinking is, this city has brought me nothing but pain, so why would I help save it? And then I think about what Bro would do, and he would want us to fight. And then I think about my children, my nieces and nephews, and the other children who deserve the opportunity to grow in a place and not fear it. Do I feel like the city has love for my brother as much as it claims to? Yes, because of the love he still receives, and no, because some of those people smile on our face and keep information from us. Do I really expect people to ride and be there for us or my brother like they say they would? Yes, because my brother was a loyal leader and would do anything for them, and no, because they don't possess the kind of heart, and it's okay, though, and I'm understanding that we will be okay. We fought to make changes in this city that would take others years to do, and it only took us a matter of months, and we're just getting started. So to my brother, Damar Bester, who was killed on August twenty-third of twenty sixteen, this is what we're doing for him. And I've seen, we've seen a lot of violence happen in this city, and it kind of, for lack of better words, these, some of these events are getting swept under the rugs. And I think what people don't realize is that these feelings don't go away, right? We're still fighting for justice for Damar, but these feelings don't go anywhere. So that pain of waking up and missing a loved one is a constant feeling, right? And it's not just in the moments that I think some people think. Some people think that it's like, well, you know, these holidays, and it's just these holiday moments where you're grieving the most, and it's not. It's these very subtle moments, right, where you could be by yourself, or it's quiet, or you drive by and something reminds you of that person, and that's when it hits you, or you, when you're looking at his daughters, or you're looking at your siblings, and you feel that in your heart. And it hurts in a way that we, you know, it hurts in a way that I would never wish on anybody, you know? And it's a true testament to us, and it's a true testament to God, that we're even able to stand here and speak in front of you guys, and that we've done the things that we've been able to do. We're thanking you all for your support and the way that you guys have been there for us. And, I mean, like I said, the success we've had, even as far as having that petition, we didn't exactly know how we were going to go about that or what to do, we just knew that we were going to do it, and we weren't going to be denied, and we weren't going to be turned down, and we had success doing that. So everybody you see right there is a reflection of Damar Bester, and there's so many more. And like I said, we're thankful for, we don't want anybody else, and again, there's always going to be violence, but what we're understanding is that this community, I mean, and even by some of the conversations that we've seen tonight, it's this thing where we have to get in a place where we're communicating with each other, and we kind of get back to that. So it's not a thing where we feel like we're against each other, because what we found out is that it's truly, really about stepping up and saying, no, this is what we want to be done, and this is what we feel like should be done, and that support comes. So thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you and your family and friends rallying together for wonderful thoughts.
I'm going to sign this first, right?
Yeah. You sign this deal, so if you could just tell us your name and address.
My name's Othea Stevenson. My address is twelve thirteen High Valley Lane, Shiloh, Illinois. This is my son, Derwin. My son was Damar. He was the youngest. And like he said, we came, I came, four hours away. I didn't know this meeting was so intense when I came. He spoke for me the first time I was in an absence. I actually was somewhere else speaking on gun violence in Chicago, Illinois. I'm not a speaker, my son is. But since my son has died, I've been doing that. I've been speaking on against gun violence, because I just don't want any other mother to have to go through and suffer the pain that I have been enduring this far. But I came back because I really had two men in mind that I really wanted to thank that has had my back since day one. The day after my son died, I walked, I've been raised in Rock Island, but I moved away, okay? I moved away, but my kids got older and they decided to stay here. My mother still lives here, she lives on Twelve Street. My mother has been here for years. My mother is Luethel Gray, and I'm sure these two men know her well, very well. She has broad shoulders, and she's always calling them for something, so they know her well. But after my son's death, I started walking through the city, and I wanted to see what could we had done to kind of prevent some things from happening, and kind of go through and say, what could have made a change in this city, okay? And we started looking, and I started noticing that a lot of the lights were broken, you know what I mean? And they were shot out, and I couldn't understand. And I said, you know, I remember when I was younger, our mother said, you better get home before them streetlights come on, you know? And I noticed that they weren't working, and I said, you know what? And I told my son, I said, something's got to get done about the streetlights. If it was some streetlights around here, maybe something different would have been if they, when they ran up to them, maybe somebody would have had seen something. So we started putting together that petition for Lights, Camera, and Action. So we walked around, me, my husband, and my son, and we walked around for two days after that, and we got over a thousand signatures just in that area. So we went through the proper procedures, and what we did is I went home to Shiloh, I drove to Shiloh, and I said, now, who can I contact next? I contacted who? The city manager, which was Randy Tweet. I took those petitions, put them all in a yellow envelope, and I mailed them to him. He didn't know who I was. I put a letter in there, I looked up Randy Tweet's history as far as Rock Island, told him who I was, told him I was raised in Rock Island, looked up his history, he has a son. I told him how I felt. I told him how I had lost my son and how important family was, you know what I mean? And he knew how important family was, because he has one. You know, and I said, we can do something about this, we can make a change, you know? We can start to make a change. It may not stop all the violence, but least we can start working on some type of solution, you know what I mean, to this gun violence. So we put that petition together, and Randy has been helping us ever since with that. And I mean, so I commend him, and I honor him with that. You know, so that petition, of course, he brung it to you guys' attention, and it's called Lights, Camera, and Action, and we're going along with that, and we thank him and we honor him with that. And another gentleman, you know what I mean, that I want to honor is Larry Cook. Awesome guy, awesome guy. I don't know where he is.
Right behind you.
Okay. I, me again, I just came in town one day, and I said, you know what? I said, I guess this goes along with Randy Tweet. I said, along with the Lights and the Camera and Action, I guess it's with the city as well, so it has to do with Public Works. We did a benefit for a bench. Derwin spoke on a memorial bench in the legacy of our son, Damar. We wanted that memorial bench placed in that Glenhurst Court area where he got killed at. So we started discussing things with Larry Cook. I came in town one day, I had never met Larry, you know what I mean? I walked into the Public Works Building, he didn't have to see me. I met his secretary, you know what I mean, and it was right around the time of lunch break. He didn't have to do that. I know some men, they'd be like, she needs to make an appointment, you know? No, he stopped, didn't know me, but he was able to see me, and he has been working with me ever since. I commend and I honor these two men, because you meet some people, and they say, I got your back, they hand you a card, and you never see them again. You never hear a text from them, and you never hear a phone call from them. You know what? But these two men, since we have started this journey, has had our families back, and we commend them. So these two plaques that we have had made, one goes to Randall Tweet, which is the city manager of Rock Island. On behalf of the Bester, Stevenson, and Gray family, we would like to honor you and present you with this plaque, thanking you for all you have done to assist us with your endeavor to get the petition, the Lights and the Camera Action Legacy started for Damar DeAngelo Bester. Thank you. He was awesome. He let me come back to his office. I sat down, I talked to him, I took up his time, I'm sure, from talking, but he was all for, you know, the memorial bench, he was all for cleaning up Glenhurst Court area. He said, hey, what can I do? When do you think this will happen? Mar's death will be on August twenty-third, so I want to present Larry Cook. This says, Rock Island, Illinois, Larry Cook, interim Public Works Director. On behalf of the Bester, Stevenson, and Gray family, we would like to honor you and present you with this plaque, thanking you for your diligence in assisting our family in our journey of placing a memorial bench to honor the legacy of our son, Damar DeAngelo Bester. to honor the legacy of our son, Damar DiAngelo Bester.
I'm sorry. And then, and also too, Chief Hueson is in the back, and, and we wanted to thank him too. He's been very open, as much as he can be. It's an ongoing investigation and stuff like that, but as far as the diligence with the department, and him getting back to us and stuff, we, we definitely want to thank the Rock Island Police Department too. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. I would like to say thank you very much for coming tonight, and, and thanking us. You know, you don't hear this very often, unfortunately, sometimes you get a lot of negatives and not positives. So thank you for that, and the positive words, but more importantly than that, thank you for stepping up and doing something. Sometimes people come up with problems but not solutions. You and your family and that sort of thing are working on solutions, grassroots, and that's a very important part for us. So thank you very much for everybody here, and, and we want to be able to have your back and continue that, for sure. So let's, let's keep up that great work, and, and, and so it's not a lost cause.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
I was, I was going to save this comment for another time, but I think, I think in conjunction with this family, we have to recognize that we still have some problems with the ongoing gun shots in the community, more so than I was aware of when I was not on the council. And I'm hoping that the council can meet with the police department sometime very soon, just to get updated in terms of things that we are doing, things that we could be doing, that we're not doing, and other community members. I'm sure if it was an open meeting, would like to participate in that as well.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Yeah, we're, we're ready to up our investment and use every tool we can to stop this. Every tool we got. We're ready.
I do need a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Beckett, all those payers say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? We adjourn.